City Council Community Meeting for Monday, October 28th, 2024. I'm Ward One City Council Bernie Schultz, and I'm hosting the meeting. Council President Zarella and I, in consultation with FATV Executive Director Nate Glenny, have renamed the former Ward One Community Meeting to the City Council Community Meeting. In case another city councilor wants to host one of the monthly community meetings.
And in recognition of the fact that Councilor Schultz has really admirably built this into a setting for community-wide updates, not solely Ward One concerns, so we felt it should have the recognition that it's due and make it clear to everyone that if you're interested in what's going on in our community, this is a meeting for you.
Okay, thank you, Council President Zarella. So tonight, I have invited Council President Zarella, Anthony Zarella, and City Clerk Joanna Balata to make presentations and answer questions. We've got the upcoming election a week from tomorrow, so I'm sure they've got a lot to share with us. So I think we'll start with Joanna.
Sure, I'm happy to go first. Welcome. Thank you all for having me. Hi, as Councilor Schultz said, I'm Joanna Balata, the City Clerk. Thrilled to be a part of Fitchburg and the community, and I absolutely love my job. I go from a wedding to someone's vote by mail registration to swearing in a police officer. My day, all day, is different, which is very nice. It just keeps us busy and running all day. But the topic today, we're going to kind of walk through elections and the 2024 elections. I have pages of stuff I can share with you. Is there any specific questions off the top of your head you would like to discuss? Or do you want me to kind of go through mine and as we hit those topics, have conversation with them? Sure.
I don't know, but why do we have, why can't we change the location of the Ward One election place site to the South Street School? They're three tenths of a mile away, they have more parking, it's lighted parking, there is even strike parking, and just as, and multiple entrances, so, because at Nights of Columbus, everybody on the other end, a few spaces that are in the front, you've got to drive by this narrow area past the entrance and exit. There's only one entrance and exit for the voters, and what happens is, you know, cars that go by, it's all dark back there, and it's even not exactly very bright where they come in and out of. And, you know, someone could get, could get hit by someone if they're not paying attention, they just walk out, and, you know, and could get hit like that. And it's all congested anyways. There's only one little entrance/exit on the street, and half the time, the people holding the signs are blocking the view. Going left is like, you know, takes forever for one, because of the lights further down, but it's, it's just not a good location. It's better if the South Street School has it. And the same thing at St. Joseph's Church. It should be at Memorial. Memorial has, you know, you can use a cafeteria, you can use a gym, you know, there's plenty of space up there too, whereby, I'm betting, St. Joseph's has plenty of parking, but their big parking lot is very dark in there. Very dark, and has only like one floodlight that seem active.
Well, thank you, that's a great, great point, and I've been here two and a half years, and probably two years ago, I did my first election in November, and I, with President Zarella, had numerous conversations about that, and we are moving them. And the first step was to meet with the Superintendent of Schools. I want to get all our polling locations back into municipal buildings. We have these buildings, we're paying for these buildings, because we pay also an additional fee to rent those utilities, where that could be selfish, get me more election workers to help work the polls versus just paying for rental space when we have all these municipal buildings. So the first step was to get and work with the school department that on Election Day, schools will be closed to students, and it will be Professional Development Days. So he did that, he came out with the 24/25 school calendar, and you'll see, for Memorial, school is closed on the Tuesday after Labor Day, and it, Professional Development Day, and it's a Professional Development Day this Tuesday. So now, once this election's over, we would have done it sooner, but we're also going to move Rollstone out of the church and into a school building. And they're rebuilding Crocker, because we're looking for that, this one may be Crocker or McKay. And nothing's in writing, because we're going to have public forums, so this is just thoughts that we've, yes, we're getting them in municipal, we all agree on that. So Crocker was building the new school, so we couldn't do it till that school's up and running. So the next November/September elections will be in all school buildings, and as you said, Nights of Columbus will be moved to South Street School. St. Joseph's would either go to I, it's a Memorial, or Reingold. And then Rollstone Church would either go to Crocker or McKay. So those are the, the schools in question, and we're going to have public forums for residents to come and be able to express their preference as well, to make sure we're all working on it together for the same goal. But you're correct, they're ADA compliant, they have lighting, they, they have all the things we need to run an election there.
And how often does the box, the voting box out here in front of City Hall get picked up?
I would say four times a day. And then on Saturday and Sunday, probably three times a day, because we're open for early voting, so we've worked the last two weekends, so right at 7:30, we check it, we leave at 11:30, 12 o'clock, we check it, and then at 3:00, when we're done early voting, we do one last check. It will be closed Halloween, the state has asked that we close it on October 31st, because some kids might be pranksters, and we don't want, so we're going to lock it so they can't squeeze or do anything inside the box.
And then how about, when you bring in your envelope, when do they, when do they open, when do they open the voting, the votes themselves? I brought my vote to the window, gave it to them, in that outside white envelope, that's if you were going to mail. Now, do they open it then?
Yes.
Just the outside one, and keep the one closed on the, on the, the inside one, the tan one, and then open it on Election Day?
What we exactly do when we get your envelope, we timestamp your envelope, we open it and pull out the yellow EV7, and we make sure you signed it.
Yeah.
Because if you didn't sign it, we, we have to get it back to you for your signature. And then we stamp the back of that as well, so both documents have gotten stamped. Then we take that, and we scan the code, the barcode that was on your label, we scan that, which tells the state system, you've returned your mail, vote by mail ballot. Because you can go on the state website at any time and track your ballot, and know exactly where your ballot is. So we scan it in as soon as we get it, and then we file them by Ward Precinct, and they go down in the vault. And then we advance deposit those ballots. It's a public meeting, you can come watch. We're doing two rounds, because we've had so much activity. I don't want to bring those to, because if we don't, if we don't advance deposit them, we're bringing thousands to the polling locations while they're trying to service the customers that are voting the day of. So what we do is we advance deposit them, we set up a little mini election, we open up the yellow envelope, we call out the name, we scan it with that barcode in the poll pad, and then it goes into the tabulator, there's discs for each Ward Precinct, so we do Precinct One, and all ballots that we have in-house go on those discs. We then count all the ballots in packs of 50, they go in a storage bin with sealed locks, we have to record the seals, and they go back down in the vault. I can't look at those memory cards that all that data's on for all 12 precincts till 8:00 PM, just like an election, Tuesday night at City Hall, right in the lobby, again, you can come watch. We put each set of discs in, we close the election, because we can't close it, we need the data on those. We close it, we print receipts, just like at the election, and we post them on the window of City Hall. And then as all the precincts come down, we add Poll Precinct 1A with what we did with 1A to get our final number.
Now, we have six places to, to vote on voting. I, I plan it because of vote by mail and early voting, is it necessary, how six, or can you cut it down to three?
No, I definitely will need the six. The ballot is two pages, double-sided, eight by 14, so that's going to add 40 seconds to each ballot going through that tabulator, and because of the questions, a lot of the lines occur because people haven't read the red book. They're, they're reading all this information while they're voting, so they're actually in a voting booth for 30, 40 minutes, and that's what's creating the line to try to vote, is we, we just, the people, and the state actually sent a mass general law, which I just learned today for the first time. When there's a line at a polling location, the residents only have five minutes to vote.
Yeah.
If there's a line, I did not realize there was a five minute, if there's no line, take as much time as you need. There's no one here, thoughts be, but if in fact there's a line, they, they say it's a five-minute, so you're not building up.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah. Oh, good, yeah, I just learned that today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll kind of go through mine. And as you get questions, start me, don't wait till the end, start me while we're on that subject. So to just recap, the election is Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, November 5th. Our polls open at 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, everybody is welcome. Everybody, I want everybody to vote, so whatever way works for you, whether it's going there the day of, whether it's coming in, we're doing in-person early voting, up till this Friday, November 1st, 8:30 to 4:30. It's set up, right when you walk in the lobby, there's a conference room, you go vote. That, that is open for the rest of this week, 8:30 to 4:30. And then the last day to apply for vote by mail is tomorrow. So if anybody wants to vote by mail, the deadline to get you the ballot in time to get it back is tomorrow, the 29th. The last day to register to vote was Saturday. People could still register to vote, they just wouldn't be able to vote in this election. The state changed with the Vote Acts of 2022, it used to be 20 days before election for voter registration, and they changed that to 10 days. So the way it works, because nobody counted or used a calendar, it's always going to be the Saturday before your election. Well, what municipalities in Massachusetts are open on Saturday? 8:30 to 5:00. But we're here, now we're here, every, that Saturday, the 26th, or 10 days out, before an election, for anybody that wants to do a voter registration, change your address, anything to do with your voter registration. You could do that online, you could come right to the City Clerk's office, fill it out, and we're happy to, because you moved within Fitchburg, we're happy to assist you in any way we can with that. But for this November 5th, the last day was last Saturday. You could still register, it'll just be next November. Who can register? This is a great question that people ask. A U.S. citizen can register to vote, a resident of Massachusetts that's 18 years or older, no one currently incarcerated by reason of a felony conviction, you can register to vote online, by mail, or in person. Those are the three options that we discussed. And you can preregister for an election. If I'm 17 years old, I can preregister that on my 18th birthday, I'll automatically be enrolled to register to vote. So myself and my, one of my team members will go every year to the high school, and we do a voter registration drive. And, and we do that for the students, but we also do it for, 40% of, of, Fitchburg is bilingual, and Spanish is the main. So we're hoping that going to the schools and educating the kids to the process, that they're going to be able to go home and communicate it back to their parents, so they have a better understanding of it and what it's all about. So, and we really get two benefits out of it. We get kids excited to be a part of it, and we're hoping they're going to go home and share what they learned with their parents that aren't strong English speakers. So that, because people say, why don't you do that? Because it's a benefit for, for that minority. Yeah, and we already talked about that. The voter registration we talked about, I'm just going to, because I go on and on and on. Registering online, a new thing that has occurred, anything we do with your voter registration, we send you an acknowledgement letter that says, hey, we changed you, we moved you to, we changed your address, we, you know, it said Joanna Loretta Balata, and I just want Joanna L. Balata. We, we changed that. Whatever we did, you're going to get a letter in writing. So the state has said, we've got to make it easier for people to register to vote, so anytime you go to the registry and update your license, you register to vote. If you lease a car, you work in Worcester, you lease a car, they lease a car for you, and they put it in your name, but the address is Worcester, well, guess what? You're going to get registered to vote in Worcester. You're going to get an acknowledgement letter that says, congratulations, you registered to vote in Worcester. And then you're going to call me angry, that says, farts going on, I've never registered, I've lived in Fitchburg for 40 years, and then I have to say, I'm sorry, have you gone to the registry in the last couple of weeks? You'll say yes, and then we go back to the conversation. So all we do is have your, you have to come sign, because we need everything with a signature. You sign it by email, we take it by email, anything to capture your signature, and we change you right back. So know that. But that's something that does happen, same with, there's a couple criterias. Mass Health, if you sign it for Mass Health, that's a voter registration, your, the RMV, and there was one third one. Health Connector, the RMV, Mass Health, or the Health Connector. Any of those state agencies that does an application automatically also registers you to vote. If you don't fill out a party, you're automatically enrolled as an unenrolled, and then you can change it or be unenrolled. That's totally up to you and what your political designation is.
And just to be clear, because the state does not always use, or politics in general does not always use, clear terminology, if you are listed as unenrolled, it doesn't mean you're not enrolled to vote, it just means you're not enrolled with any particular party.
And every election, you get to choose the person, not the party, when you're unenrolled. You can vote Democrat this one, you can vote Republican next one, Libertarian, whatever you want, every election, and whatever, if I in September vote Democrat, I don't change to a Democrat, I'm still unenrolled, just at that election, I chose that. And now this election, it doesn't matter, because it's not a party, it's a one ballot. But unenrolled allows you to identify the candidate you want versus a party. The Secretary of State William Gavin's website, I don't know if that's my third boss, my first boss, the mayor's my second boss, and then I also work for William Gavin, but he never asked for my feedback.
He should.
He never asked for my feedback.
He couldn't trust the system.
He just says, you're going to work 10 weekends this year, and, yeah, he put a smile on. So he has a wonderful website, that, as I said, you can go on there, you can register to vote on there, you can get a vote by mail application, you can track your ballot, so you could see where your ballot is. Am I registered? You can go right on there, you type your name, your city, and it'll pop right up, giving you that information. It, it really is a wealth of information, and I, I recommend anybody who has questions to please go on and look. I'm on it all the time, because people will call me, and I want to give them the nice writing that the state has versus my, you know, the way I interpret it. So I, I go on there quite a bit, and it's very informative, very user-friendly. It, it looks just like this, it's just a box of things, you put your name, your address, and your zip code's required, and your date of birth, but it's, it's a great tool, and it can provide you a wealth of information. Census also has to do with elections, and I just want to talk about census for a minute, because that's how we get our state money. The state bases all our funding on the population of Fitchburg, and they get that through the annual census. It's not us tracking you, it's not us wanting to spend this money, it's a mass general law mandating that we mail out this census form to every resident in Fitchburg. And there's a term, if you don't complete your census in June, I send you, I make anybody who has not returned their census inactive. You're still a voter, you're just inactive. So what happens when you go to the polls, you're going to come up as an inactive, and you need to go to the special assistant table and just show proof of residency that you still live in Fitchburg, whether it's your driver's license, an electric bill, a bank statement, something that has your name, your address, for us to verify you still live in Fitchburg. You'll file a voter affirmation form that says yes, that you're swearing I still live at such and such a street. After the election, we put that all in, and it makes you an active voter again. But we send everybody a postcard saying, we've not received your census, we're going to make you inactive, and they, they automatically assume I've taken them out of voting, which I have not. You're just going to have to show proof of residency when you go to vote. And again, it's not something the city of Fitchburg wants to do, it's a state mandating, and that's how they base how to send us money. So tell your friends to fill it out, because we need Chapter 70, we need Chapter 90, so we need those funds. And I don't think we're getting the right amounts, because people aren't completing that census form. If you are inactive, we talked about that. Applying for your ballot, so you can apply, you can request a vote by mail ballot, that'll go right to your house, you could do that online, by mail, by email, or fax. You could just request it, the state, not City of Fitchburg again, sent you three postcards this year. 45 days before any state or federal primary, you're going to get a card that says, do you want to vote by mail? And it says, all elections or each specific one? Because on Facebook right now, there's chatter that, it showed I got a vote by mail, and I never requested a vote by mail. So I go and I get their name, and I go and look up to make sure, and we have their card, but they did it in January. Well, they don't remember, in January, they clicked all elections, and that's why I still have it, because I have to do, send you a vote by mail for all elections, because that's what you asked for. So, but the state does that, we're the ones that get it back, and some people write lovely notes to us. And then there's people that say, if you send me another card, I'm going to lose my mind. But the state, every election 45 days before, is going to send you that postcard. As we talked about, our demographic for Fitchburg, I strongly believe in, and I know my president has, I've not talked to every specific councilor about this, I feel our municipal election, because we can opt out of. City Council can vote and opt out of early voting, in-person voting for our municipal, but people are going to get too confused, because they don't understand, well, how come I can go vote in person or get it in the mail for these, but I can't for this? So I believe our municipal election is as important as our two state and federal, so I offer it on all elections. And you'll get a vote by mail application on the back of your census form next year. There'll be two things on the back, there'll be your dog renewal, and there'll be your vote by mail on the back of your census, a vote by mail application. So for our September, if needed, and November municipal, if you want vote by mail applications, I would fill them out with your census, we fill it out, just like we do now, and you'll get it, you'll get that for the September, if needed, and November election.
And that's, you know, it's, nothing in this whole elections process is cheap, but if we can't spend money on making sure that the actual apparatus of democratic government works properly in the city of Fitchburg, then what, what's more important than that? You know, what, what the heck are we doing here if we're not going to make sure that we're giving everyone in the city the best possible chance to have their say in what we do, and for that matter, who's doing it? You know, I, I tell people every time, you don't, you don't like the thing that I said or did or whatever, vote me out. I only want to be here for as long as people want me here, so.
And because it is, it's a lot of work. Like right now, we've, we've done the vote by mail for 14 days. Usually it's, it's 10 days, but for the presidential, they do it for 14 days. But City Hall, my clerk office is still running. I'm still answering the phone, I'm still, I'm doing all that job responsibility, while I'm also running a 14-day mini, 14-day mini-election in the lobby of City Hall, and I will tell you, there's 150 to 200 people coming in to vote every day, so far, since we've started early voting. We were getting about 150 to 200 residents coming in to early vote. So it, it's good traffic, it's, it's great traffic, and that's why I said, we do that in advance deposit, because to send, you know, 2,000 ballots while they're trying to run the polls the day of election is just not fair to them. In 2022, two of them, my two biggest ones, which is Memorial and Rollstone, didn't get back till City Hall till quarter or two in the morning, and their day, they were at those locations at 6:00 AM, so their day started at 4:30. So that's, it's just not fair. So that's why, again, it's an extra burden on myself and staff, but I, I can't do that to the election workers. It's just, it's just too much to ask of them, so. And we want people to vote. So I want more ballots than less ballots. So I'm going to do whatever I can to get everybody to vote and give everybody every option to vote. And it is a very secure system, that's been on Facebook. At every vote by mail application, you sign, and, and our job is when the brown envelope comes, we make sure. I, I'm going to say to you, do we, we sent out 6,800 vote by mails, my, myself and team, with City Hall running, we sent out 6,800. Do we check every single? No, we, we, we don't. But the ones that you can't read their signature, because they do the doctor sign, those type of things, we absolutely do go pull their file, their report, and make sure they match. And it's funny, people say, no, I didn't sign up for, and, and we have the card right there, they're all by Ward, by precinct, and we're, and we're able to provide it and show them. It's the same thing if on the, we have to save every envelope when we take those ballots out, because there's people, they, the election will say, I never voted early. Nope, I always vote on Election Day. I did not. And then what we do is we have to go down with the police officer, break the seal, go by Ward Precinct, get that envelope, they take a picture of it, they send it to me via my phone, I'll say, was, was this your? Oh, yeah, I was just testing the system, which is okay, because they need that affirm that it worked. They want to know that I early voted, and is it all, all okay? And so if I can give them that, thank God, and I said this, oh my God, they got that envelope, right? Because you're like, oh my God, have the envelope, have the envelope. And they did, which was a great thing.
If you don't vote, don't complain.
Correct. Correct. But, yeah, so it is, it, you know, the state has rules on everything that we touch, that we follow. Anthony's part of them, we, I'm sorry, President Zarella, we meet, you know, every other Thursday in my office, we go through all this stuff. It's very tightly watched.
Mm-hmm. And I will say, Joanna won't ask for it, because she will do any, absolutely anything and everything to make this city run better. But on her behalf, I will say, yes, it's great that we can prove to anyone who doubts it that the system works, but given the amount of work that's already going into this, please, if you have questions about how we verify election security, come to us and ask them before the election, don't try to test the system on Election Day, because we can prove it, we did last time, like, that was a real incident that Joanna just described, but please don't, because that takes a police officer and the clerk or one of her staff members on the busiest day of her year to then, just to go and verify that you who know you didn't, who know you voted by mail, actually did vote by mail, you know, test, test the system a different time. But if you do, we'll always be able to back it up, every time.
Thank you. Thank you. But I, and that's, that's to piggyback on that. If you see, if you're on Facebook, if you see, please tell them, call the clerk. If you have a question, email cityclerk@fitchburgma.gov, call the city clerk, I'll give you the mass general law. We have advisories, people call me all the time, I share, I share the advisory, an advisory just came out, we, you can't do any campaigning 150 feet from any polling location. And if you're walking the sidewalks here, you'll see X's, because people with the parade setup, Saturday's parade setup, subtables that might be running for public office. Well, they know they have to be on the other side of that X. There's specific things in the polling location you can't wear, and the state just sent out an advisory with some terminology that's being used this election, that, like, I myself did not know, a couple of them on there, something with cats. I, I knew nothing about cats, and that that was a political thing, and, and I learned that. If you have a red sweatshirt that says Democrat or Republican, you, you can't wear that in a polling location. So you're going to be asked to in a polling location. So you're going to be asked to turn it around, put a jacket on. You just, you can't do it. And that's part of the police officers. But I'll give you the advisory. So you can read the state advisory, and you're just saying the right thing instead of misinforming, you know, another 300 people on the wrong thing. I'll give you the advisory, and then you could share it where you want. And this is what we go by. And you're saying the right thing. So please, refer anybody always to us. That's, that's what we're here for. I was just on, with one of our people today, and we had a lovely 45-minute conversation. You know, there's something on there, which, you know, for me, I'm glad it's on Facebook right now because it proved someone came into early vote. And it's loud in the lobby, and you've got three people checking in, so sometimes it's hard to hear. So we have to verify three times who you are, your address. So we're both on the same page. It's Joanna Balada, 362 Sunset, and we print the label. So the person misread the wrong line and said, oh, I see you voted by, no, I did not, no, no, I didn't. I didn't ask for that. I never asked for that. And she said, let me restart. And she said, oh, I'm terribly sorry. I was reading the wrong line. Are you blah, blah? Yeah. Three times we print it and you sign it, verifying the information on the label. Well, over Facebook, yeah, we were fighting the system and we were stealing votes. And no, she just read the name on, she was right on the wrong line. And that's why we do it three times, because people are like, oh my God, how many times she could ask me my name and address? That's why we do it. So we're both on the same page. We're both hearing the same thing. Le blank, L E space B. We couldn't find Le blank because in the state registering system, he was L E with a space blank. Well, who would type in? L E space blank. So they couldn't find him. They called me. I could do an advanced search by address. And then I saw the space and was able to have the conversation with them. We're making sure the right people get the right ballot. That's, that's what we're doing. And it's not to be antagonistic or argumentative. We want to make sure we all agree on who's in front of us. That's all.
And that's just a good general piece of advice for anyone dealing with, certainly this city government. I can't speak to any other government. But if something, if you're, if you're not clear on why we do something a certain way, or something seems fishy to you in some way, before you go and start saying what you think it is out in public, call and ask. We're all available. We all want to help. Just call and ask. And if you still don't like the answer, by all means, you have freedom of speech. Go tell the public anything you want about us. Tell them how awful Anthony Zarella is. But at least ask first. Give, give us the chance to say, oh, no, this thing you're concerned about, it's actually a really simple thing that just sounds weird, you know, or whatever. We're all happy to do that anytime.
All the undocumented people are voting. They don't know what you have to go through to get registered to vote. Yeah, yeah?
And, you know, and there's also been a lot of confusion. I don't think, I don't know about any in Pittsburgh specifically, but nationwide, there's been confusion about how provisional ballots work and how we, how those are verified after the fact. So there may be people who fill out a ballot who aren't eligible, but their vote isn't going to get actually counted. It's just going to get filed away somewhere for review. And then on review, they'll say, nope, this isn't an eligible voter. Bye-bye. Right, there's that too.
Actual legal residents.
You have to claim what resident you want to be at. Whether you live at the Cape or you live here, you don't get to vote at both.
Right.
You have to pick which, which community you want to be a part of and vote in. It's the same thing with Pittsburgh State, we have a college. So there's a lot of kids that they have, oh, I want to come vote. But they're registered where they live, where now they could do a vote by mail. And we mail them the ballot right to Pittsburgh State. They mail it right back to their person. Or they can register to vote in Pittsburgh. And now that's their voting location. So they have the option either way. Because we went and I did a session at Pittsburgh State University, and we talked about that a lot, what the options are for the college kids and to vote, and what's the easiest way.
I voted early because I was going to Australia. While I was in Australia, my wife and I witnessed another couple's early votes that they were mailing in from Australia with their US address. And we witnessed it for them.
Yeah, yeah. No, and that's, it's, I don't, you know, I truly in my heart believe it's, it's nothing, it's to get people to vote. They're trying to offer different ways because everybody has a different lifestyle. Everybody has a life and are doing things, and they want to make it as accessible to every person in the state of Massachusetts to be able to vote. And it's my goal to make that happen. And we do, we try, we will, the post office delivers our ballots at 3:00 in the afternoon. The day of the election, the next day, if 35 ballots come to me, I cannot get those ballots. I cannot count them. I cannot. So I worked with the postmaster. And now at 6:30, I drive to the post office, and all the guys have come back. They've unloaded their truck. And I take all those ballots. So we can now count those ballots. Instead of writing reject all over them on Wednesday morning, I'm now able to count those. I run them to the polling locations where they go. They go right in the tabulator and their vote counted. It's those little things we got to do to make sure we're doing everything we can to make sure they're vote. I would tell people now, if you have a vote by mail ballot, your best way is to put it in the mailbox with the flag right at the base of City Hall and not flex the post office. Right? You know, right there, we do it three to five times a day. So right here, we're going to get that ballot quicker than the US Postal can get it. And the postal services under the postmaster came, there's a new one in Pittsburgh. He came in, he introduced himself. He's coming in at least, at least three times a week delivering more ballots. How's it go? So I think the government's really, you know, saying, we all got to work together. We all got to get these ballots back to where they need to be. And we've seen a difference with that. They're doing a weekly conference call for us to jump on now, sharing, do you have issues? Did something happen? How can we make it better? So it's been a great partnering to try to make sure these ballots are getting back and counted.
And that's the thing. You'll, you will hear a lot of people saying things about, you know, how the government is going out of its way to increase the number of ballots count. Well, yes, yes, we are, especially Joanna's office. I'm doing whatever I can, whatever she tells me would be helpful, to increase the number of ballots that we count. The point is, these are eligible ballots that we are trying to count. We're not increasing the numbers by goose-ing them up. We're increasing the numbers by, by trying to minimize the number of votes that get lost or voided for technical reasons.
Get people registered beforehand.
Right. I would, I would love, I've said this since my very first term. Our election numbers, not just ours here in Pittsburgh, but I mean, ours statewide, nationwide, are frankly pathetic. Our vote, our vote percentages in terms of the percent of registered voters who actually vote, or the percentage of eligible voters who are actually registered, I would rather lose my seat in an election with 70% turnout than keep my seat in an election with 15% turnout. Because, again, you know, we're, we're here to serve the people of the city. We can't do that if only one in 10 eligible voters is actually making their voice heard on Election Day. Then we're still going to do our best to serve the whole city, but we're only being chosen by a tiny fraction of the city. And then there's all the rest of the people in the city who are eligible, who should have a say, who, some, some, hopefully a lot, like what we do, some don't. But if they didn't vote, like you said, if they didn't vote, then why are they complaining? I want everyone to have their voice heard. And I'm, I've been thrilled to work with Joanna these last few years to, and see all the effort that goes into getting as much, basically as much democracy as possible in the city of Pittsburgh. They bend over backwards in that office.
We do.
I have a question, Joanna. I think it's, it's something that I, I think I know the answer, but I, maybe it's something we should discuss. Now, you said the, the best way to get your mail-in ballot is to put it in the box in front of City Hall. Now, if people mail it, even, you know, at one time, you were able to mail, mail something in Pittsburgh. And if you put it in the Pittsburgh box, it would stay in Pittsburgh. But I think all, all the mail now goes out of town and then comes back, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't know the date off my, the top of my head, so I don't want to say the date. But I think it's starting October 29. It's not leaving Pittsburgh.
Okay.
They said it will leave to the distribution centers up till, I believe it's the 26th or the 29th, one of those dates. And they're going to stay in.
It'll stay in Pittsburgh.
They're going to stay in Pittsburgh to get them back to us. Yes. And I can email you that date. Because it was on one of the conference calls, so I wrote it down.
Okay.
Thank you, Joanna.
Pittsburgh, I just got a Boston postmark.
And add a presidential election. We can, up to five days after, any ballots that come back, only for presidential, that are stamped on November 5, we will count up till November 8. They have to be postmarked. Same with voter registrations. If we get voter registrations today that were date stamped by the post office, the Saturday, the 26th, we accept those. Because they mailed it, the 26th, it just took that long to get to us.
And I'll just note, for anyone either here in the audience or watching later, who may be curious, that's not actually even a special rule for elections or anything. That's how everyone in the legal profession does business. It's called the mailbox rule. The date of postmark is the date that something is effective. So, you know, again, you'll hear some people saying, oh, it's a special rule that we're, they're trying to influence the election this way, that way, the other way. No, that's the way things are done in every other area of law. If a contract says you have to make payment by, or, you know, give notice by the 30th of the month, and it's postmarked by the 30th, but the mail messes up and it doesn't get there until the 12th of the following month, that was still on time. And it's the same way with the.
With municipal and state elections, it's, it's 8:00 PM the day of. Anything the next day that comes in, we don't count. But for the federal, the state allows us to count those due to the postmark.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is that, you said, if it's going to now change it back to having a slot for Pittsburgh-only mail, is that for just the election mail? Or is that for?
Just election mail. Just election mail. There's a specific envelope that they pull right out. It says ballots all over it. They know what, they pull out those envelopes. It's not, it's only ballots.
Not general mail.
Correct. No, just ballots. Yeah, all the general mail will go. They're just pulling out the ballots. Which is very helpful. Okay, voting in person, we talked about. We talked about opting out at your local elections. Also, online, they have the vote by mail applications and every, and the ballots, sample ballots, in every language. So for, in Pittsburgh, we do English, Spanish. But if there's other denominations here in Pittsburgh that want to read in their language, they can go right on here. And it's all, they have a whole list of all languages. So again, that's why I love their website. I refer a lot of people there. And then I just wanted to give you the Secretary of State's email information. And they, they get right back to you at elections. It's just elections@secretary.state.mass.us. And they're very quick and efficient.
And just to clarify, that's S E C dot state dot M A dot U S.
Elections with an S, at S E C dot state dot mass dot U S. So that's, I think I covered. Do you guys have anything?
Any questions, any other questions?
That popped up while we.
It sounds like it's good. You're doing a great job. So thank you.
You know, about six-foot-high those kiosks that are in the lobby of the City Hall, on the first floor and the second floor? Why can't we have like a kiosk of the same variety for, you know, like all businesses listed on the kiosk and any other information of how to get around Pittsburgh? You know, you punch in an address, you know, like a business, and you can find out where it is. You know, so you could have like tourist information or just general information about businesses in Pittsburgh, or, you know, finding a school or, you know, the university or whatever. Why can't we instead give $55,000 to the Johnny Appleseed Center? We could have a kiosk in City Hall, one at the library after it's finished, and then one like at the train station, bus and train station, and have one there to help people, you know, find what they want and, you know.
So we'd have to, as far as doing actual kiosks, I know before the meeting, you and I had talked about doing it on the website. That's a relatively light lift. It just requires someone who has the time and expertise to reprogram the website that way. As far as doing it as kiosks, we'd have to price that out. I have no idea what those would go for and whether it would be doable for several thousand dollars, or if we're talking more like 100,000 or, you know, I don't know. I don't know what those go for. I do think that continuing our contribution to the Johnny Appleseed Center is important because people aren't, people outside the north central region are fairly unlikely, as of yet anyway, to come from, say, out of state just to come to Pittsburgh. They might come to, from out of state to do multiple things in the region, though. So if we've got that whole regional effort going, that brings people to Pittsburgh who might otherwise say, well, I'd like to check out the art museum, but I'm not going all the way to Pittsburgh just for that. You know, that, that sort of thing. I do think that remains important. But I do like the idea of getting a lot of this tourist information and just general knowledge information for new residents and so forth, digitized and get it easily available at people's fingertips. Because even as a longtime Pittsburgh resident, there are occasionally times when, if I happen to have missed, like, the new business email that goes out to the council when a new business comes in and has a grand opening or whatever, if I happen to have missed it, then sometimes a year or so later, someone will be like, hey, have you checked out such-and-such new place yet? And it's like, where the heck is that? So it's, it's definitely an idea that I think, in a broad sense, we need to look into because no one, we're past the era where someone just walk, goes around and, you know, picks up a bunch of trifold brochures for 20, 30 different potential destinations. I remember doing that as a kid. Whenever we'd go on vacation, we'd stop in the lobby of someplace as we got near our destination. And, you know, I'd pull like the Storyland brochure and the Santa's Village brochure and the Lost, you know, when we'd go up to New Hampshire. And I'd be like, I want to go to this one, and this one, and this one, and this one. But people don't really do that much anymore. So I think it would be very helpful to have it all digital. As far as actual physical kiosks, I think the locations you identified would be really great if we could pull it off. But I don't know how much that would cost or how feasible that is.
That would be a mere IT question.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's something we can definitely forward along and see, run it up the flagpole.
I talked to her about it. She showed me on the internet that there is a city, I don't know, east of here, I don't know where it was when we looked at, that have those in the downtown area, have kiosks that can help you find your way around, find a business or find. that can help you find your way around, find a business, or find, you know, a map, like out where you are, and how to get to somewhere else.
Yeah.
Even if they have kiosks at the Johnny Appleseed Center, that covers all the different cities and towns around them.
That would also be excellent.
I mean, why don't we keep giving them all that money for, because there's only, like, a kind of maybe a dozen brochures from Pittsburgh in the place there, whereby the people who put their products and services, or products in the place, or the brochures in the place, should be paying for supporting that, plus the Northwestern County Chamber of Commerce, and the Shoggo Valley Chamber of Commerce, those Chamber of Commerce, they're the ones who should be...
They do, Joe, want to get...
I mean, completely, not the city of Pittsburgh taxpayers, because it's way over Lancaster. It's not like, the difference would be, could be better, more, might make sense if it was in the old Kmart Plaza, you know, the Twin City Plaza, where Kmart used to be, and Bogs used to be, and all those other...
Well, now that that's available, and presumably is, I can only assume the price has got to be dropping, maybe we'll pitch it to them, that they can see about moving it. Because it would be more central if they could locate it in Twin City Plaza.
There's several beside Bogs and Kmart, there's Uno, Uno Pizza.
Yeah, that flows too.
And I'm sure in that big stretch in the far back, in the far back, there's a stretch of store, there's got to be a vacant opening there.
Those ones I think might be full, but certainly on the Kmart side, there's plenty of real estate right now.
But there is a kiosk on Main Street, at the top of Mill Street, with all sorts of information about Pittsburgh, with maps and everything on it.
Yeah.
That's up there.
By the garage there.
Yeah, right at the top of Mill Street, on Main Street itself.
Yeah.
There's information there.
Okay.
Yeah, check it out and see if it matches what you have sort of envisioned. If it does, we can use it as a model. If it doesn't, then, you know, that's a place to start.
Well, like you were saying, or what I just mentioned, parking garage.
Yeah.
You could put, you know, people come, and park at the parking garage, you know, the one a boat drive in, Public Street, and the other one, like that. You could put it down there, so people drive to Pittsburgh, whether they're visiting, you know, the kids at Pittsburgh State, or visiting other relatives, you know, they've got a place to just park, and figure out where they are, where they want to go, like that.
Right, right. We could probably partner with the university itself, too, to get some of that information, whether it's in kiosk form, or on the website, or whatever, on their property as well, for the same reason. So that, you know, when students and parents come in from out of town, that was always, I went up to Bowdoin for college, and that was always a thing. It was, okay, mom and dad are coming up, where do we want to go out to eat? Where, you know, where can we grab a whatever that we forgot at home, shops and whatnot? So I agree. I think those are, those are definitely some ideas that we should see, see how viable they are.
Thank you, Gary.
The physical addresses of buildings in Pittsburgh, the different departments have different information for the address.
Huh.
It's like, Rolsto Congressional Church has always been 199 Main Street.
Yeah.
Engineering redid numbering a bit by where the streets were.
Mm-hmm.
And they changed it from 201 to 211.
Hmm.
And I have gone straight down with engineering and the assessors. However, if you apply for any building permit, you can't apply for 199 Main Street.
Oh, gotcha. I see what you're saying.
The building department has it as a different thing.
Yeah, I know one of the things that we've been working on for a while now, I know it had been something that was at least talked about in the previous administration, and I know I've talked about it with the current administration, is kind of improving the integration of our different departments. Because they all do, each of our departments does a great job, but you're not the only one who's noticed that occasionally, they don't, they're not all on the same page, just because, for the longest time, they were all working on different systems, different, you know? So that is, that's an ongoing effort, to try and improve coordination, and make sure everyone's got the same info.
Trying to get it inspected, and approved, and everything, and it's, different information goes different ways.
Mm-hmm. That's something that I first became aware of, way back when I was on the zoning board. It was the approvals process for various things. There was no, and I think there still isn't, just because it's a very difficult thing to coordinate, there's no sort of standard order in which you get your approvals. Like, if you're, if you have a specific modification you want to make to your house that requires sign-off from the fire inspector, the building inspector, the planning board, and the zoning board, you might go to the zoning board, ask for permission, and be told, well, we can't do that until you've gone to see the planning board first. The planning board might say, well, we want to see your certificate from the fire inspector. The fire inspector might say, well, I'm not going to inspect anything that hasn't been approved by the zoning board yet. And round and round we go. It's not because any one of those pieces is not working properly, they're all doing their jobs. It's just there's no standardization and coordination. It's been improving. It's something that, you know, it's a slow process, though, because as with most large organizations, and there are few organizations in the city quite as big as the city, that in any large organization, you get to the point where everyone is working hard, everyone is so, has so much on their plate, just keeping up with what they're already doing, that no one has time to revisit the process and rework how we do the work. So in one sense, it's been very slow-going. In another sense, the amount of progress we have made, even though it sometimes may not seem like all that much in that particular dimension, it's actually kind of impressive, because you have to squeeze that in, all those improvements, you have to squeeze in time to figure that out, while still keeping up with, you know, a 40, 60, 80-hour work week. I'm not talking about myself, you know, I do this, this is not what pays my bills or anything, and I love spending as much time as I can working on improving the city. But the people who actually do have full-time jobs with the city, there's, there is not a lot of time for process improvements, but they still figure out how, somehow, some way to make those improvements. Because, and I really believe this, this is one of the greatest pleasures of doing the work that I do, is that I really believe that the people we have working for the city all passionately care about making this a better place. And you don't see that everywhere. That is not something you can take for granted in government, that the people who are tasked with the basic operations of the system aren't just punching the clock. So...
Example of that is license commission. I also serve on the license commission, and any of their applications have never been in our online portal. So every year, all these restaurants and pubs, bars have to renew their license application for the next year. So they have to come in and fill out 10, 15 different pieces of paperwork, insurance, tip certificate, and for the first year, with the help of Nate LaRose, we spent the year and have them all online. And so this is the first time, November 1st starts this year's renewal process, they have the option. It's not mandated, they can come in and do it by paper, but if they want to do it online, they now have the availability to do so.
To follow their own information, we had, at Viola Pittsburgh Tire, we had the city of Pittsburgh draft up a truck on Friday for us to work on. And today, we get the tires changed, aligned, and they took it up for a road test first. And the police were called for a stolen vehicle, because the GPS on the DPW was showing unauthorized use of a vehicle. So that's fine.
But that wasn't in the vehicle.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that is particularly tricky, as we're trying to integrate new, well, not new, but new to, new for us technological improvements into our process. Again, because all of these improvements are kind of getting squeezed into the schedule wherever we can, there's not always time, and this is a particular pet peeve of mine, but it can't be blamed on any particular person, there's not always time to think of every ramification, every, every piece of the process that this new piece touches. And sometimes, like that, you get one that gets missed. You know, no one thinks, okay, we need a way to log that our vehicle is in for service, so that if it moves around and we didn't tell someone to move it, we know that it's, you know, something that's supposed to be happening. It sounds obvious in hindsight, but trying to think of that when you're thinking, okay, we're going to put GPS in our vehicles, and we're going to track where everyone goes, and we're going to do this, this, this. What happens when it gets repaired is not something most people are, that's going to kind of click for most people, because that's not what they're thinking of. They're thinking of what happens when it goes out to patch potholes, what happens when it goes to, you know, clear brush, what happened, you know, all the day-to-day stuff. And, you know, it's hard, it's hard. It's hard, even in my profession, and that's, and it's what I do all day, every day, I change one line of a contract, or a will, or something, I have to then spend my next 20 minutes going through the rest of the document with a fine-tooth comb to make sure I didn't break anything by changing that one line. But again, that's what I do day in and day out. Most of the people who are doing this at the city level, that's not actually their job, that's something that they're doing to try to improve their department, while still keeping 10 other balls in the air. So I don't envy them. You know, it's, it's easy for me, and I don't take this to be what you were doing or anything, but it's easy for anyone to kind of look at things in hindsight and say, oh, well, they should have thought of that. But when you're actually in it, and this is something I didn't appreciate until I was on the council and started to really see how the city works from the inside, when you're actually in it, there are so many moving parts.
And you consider how it multiplies to Western Springfield, Boston, exponentially...
Oh, yes. Yep.
Well, thank you, Hal. So Joanna, you're all set?
Yeah, unless anybody has some questions about what we talked about.
Okay.
And again, if you ever have questions, cityclerk@fitchburgma.gov, or I'm Joanna City Clerk, just give us a call, we'll answer anything we can.
Thank you very much. Anthony, you've been participating with Joanna. Is there anything on the horizon you'd like, you have an opportunity, maybe a few minutes to discuss something that you think is important for people to know that's upcoming?
Um, absolutely. No, honestly, I figured we'd spend most of this evening talking about elections, and so that's what I kind of came here prepared to do. So if I could just give two messages tonight, it would be, number one, do make sure to vote. I don't care who you vote for. I obviously have my opinion, which I am not going to share with anyone, because that's not why I'm here. But as far as what I'm saying now, I don't care who you vote for, just make your voice heard. There is no point in living in a modern democracy if you're just going to throw away your vote by sitting home and doing nothing. If there, unless, unless you are 100% content with the way everything is going in the city, the country, the world, then fine, sit home, because obviously, your voice isn't, you know, isn't needed to change anything. But I don't think there's anyone who's 100% satisfied, who thinks everything's going the right way. And if that's not the case, and you're not making your voice heard, then it's your fault that things aren't going the way you think it should be. Because we can't take, you know, the government is a crude instrument in some ways, the democracy is a crude instrument. The only thing we have to measure what you want is your vote. We can listen to you on the phone, or via email, or whatever, but we're also listening to, you know, dozens of other people saying different things about the same subject. The only way to actually exercise your authority as a citizen is through your vote. So send back your mail-in ballot, go to early voting, go there on the day of, whatever you need to do, and if you're having any trouble with any of that, call. I mean, I hope that anyone who's been listening tonight has gotten the idea that there is, there is nothing within the bounds of the law that this city will not do to help you get your vote counted. Oh, go right ahead.
So when do we get information about the taxes that are being passed in Pittsburgh? Does that come in that red book, or is there somewhere else that we can look those up?
Taxes specifically? So most of our taxes are just the standard property taxes that every municipality has. Those are technically, in a sense, set by the budget. So when we, when we pass the budget, we pass a total tax levy. What happens then, which will be happening later this coming month, is we have what's called a tax classification hearing, and that will all be right here, in open session, recorded. But all we're deciding there, we're not setting a tax rate, and we're not setting a total tax levy, we're setting a tax shift, which is something, a relic of the 80s, basically, that municipalities have the option to basically take the total tax burden and take a certain percentage of it off of the residents and put it onto the businesses. This is something we did from the 80s through, how many years ago was it that we closed it out, like, four or five years?
Four or five years ago, yeah.
Thing is, it was a terrible idea. It sounded good, it was, okay, back then, business was booming, it was, okay, the businesses can afford to pay, let's give the residents some tax relief. Problem is, that makes Pittsburgh a much less attractive place to do business, because we're telling the businesses, not only do you have to pay your taxes, you have to pay a percentage of everyone else's taxes, too. So we got that down to what we call a 0% shift, four or five years ago, after steadily whittling away at it for about 10 years. Personally, I hope we'll never go away from 0 again. I would love to give tax relief to our residents, but doing it on the backs of the businesses is just short-term gain for long-term loss. Because if we destabilize our business tax base, all that does is reverse all the economic gains we've made in the last decade or so. And then we wind up with the residents actually having to pay more, because if, it's just, it's basic math. If the total amount of taxes is the same, if we're shifting a certain percentage onto the businesses, but there are far fewer businesses, that still leaves a much larger share for the homeowners. Whereas if we have more businesses, even if we're not shifting any burden onto them, more of the burden naturally falls on them. Because unlike the federal government, in a Massachusetts municipality, the tax levy is a fixed number. The amount of money we collect is set when we set the budget. It's not like we're going to charge everyone X percent, and whatever we get is what we have to... have to spend. It's, we decide within certain parameters, proposition two and a half and so forth, we decide how much we're going to collect. And then the tax rate is a matter of splitting that number up across all our taxpayers. Um, so the more businesses we have to take on some of that burden, the smaller the share that's on the homeowners.
How long will that be?
Uh, I don't think we have a date set yet, but it will be sometime in mid-November, mid to late November. Um, that will be publicly posted well in advance, uh, as soon as we have a date. And you're welcome to be here, uh, you're welcome to contact us before or after the meet, well, after I guess wouldn't be much point, but contact us before the meeting and weigh in on any opinions you have on it. Um, anything else? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
If you email me when we post the agenda, I can email it to you.
I actually do that. So I do appreciate that.
Oh, there you go.
I did pay attention, but I didn't know.
So you'll see it on the...
Tax, um, things that are coming up.
Tax, yeah.
Yeah, other than that, other than the setting of the tax shift, there are no other taxes that we're going to be voting on anytime soon. Um, oh, something on that?
The questions on the ballot, I can go through the form again.
Oh, so...
Also hearing stuff about, uh, restaurant, uh...
Oh.
Taxes for local.
Yeah, meal, a meal's tax. So that's something, that's a local option, that won't, that isn't a ballot question, but, and it's not going to be decided this election. It is something that may come up in council in the near future. The situation is, there's already a meals tax through the state. Municipalities have the option to add a .75% onto that. That's not, that's not 75 cents on the dollar, that's 75 cents on $100. Um, we may, there, there is some talk in the city of doing that, because we desperately need more revenue to cover our costs. Um, and again, if anyone thinks that's because of extravagant spending, I'd be more than happy to go through the budget book with someone, but, uh, if we were to do that, what it, in real terms, what it would mean is, if you spend $100 on, at a restaurant, we'll tack on three-quarters onto your bill. Um, now, I'm, I, I think I can say with a fair amount of justification that I am one of the most pro-small business people on the council. I think we all like small business, but I've, I owe everything I am today to small business. Um, so if I thought this was going to hurt our restaurants, I wouldn't even consider it. But if you think about Dario's down the street, uh, it, down, I forget which direction I'm looking in, uh, thank you. If you figure someone's going to go out to Dario's and spend 100, 120 bucks on meals for a number of people, there's no one who's going to say, well, I was going to go there, but if it's going to cost me an extra buck, you know, that's, that's going to turn me away.
Does Luenberg, you don't have a tax though? Is it stormwater, a lot of taxes?
That's a, that's a different thing that's a little further down the road, if we do it at all, because we, we, there's a lot of, like, how do we measure this, that and the other thing?
Is that also going to be in November?
No, 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 no. No, even the meals tax, I don't think, I mean, certainly if the mayor intends to propose it in the month of November, it hasn't been sent to us yet. I, I suspect it'll come either in December or in the new year, if we discuss it at all, you know, it's still under discussion. Um, as far as stormwater fees, that is, again, that is something that is under discussion. It's not concrete enough for me to even have a strong opinion on it yet. Um, but it is something that's under discussion.
Will that be at that tax meeting?
No, no, not, the only thing that will be at that tax meeting is that, uh, that local option shift that I was telling you about. Uh, anything else would come as a normal agenda item through the normal process, and as far as the stormwater piece, I doubt that would come until probably late winter, early spring, because there's a lot of logistical pieces left to consider in terms of how do we calculate?
Watch for...
Hmm?
Watch for...
Uh, yeah, exactly, exactly. Watch the space. It will be discussed at some point in the future. I know we're at the point where we have to kind of take stock of all our options and discuss all of them, because some of them will be good, some of them will be bad, but we can't preemptively discard anything at this point. Um, but yeah, definitely, when it comes up, feel free to reach out, uh...
And just on the, the, the local tax, the food tax, it's nice, the, the nice thing about it is, for example, the Dunkin' Donuts in Great Wolf Lodge, any person that goes to Dunkin' Donuts buys a coffee, we're, we're getting a bite of that, if they buy a donut. Any, you know, they jump off the highway and they run into a couple of farms and get a donut or a package tucked off.
Mm-hmm.
Any food item, so it's, it's a real transient as they're popping in and out that you get. Lunenburg has it, Leominster has it, Lunenburg collects about 90,000 for that small little town in the meals tax, and like President Zorilla said, it's, you know, three-quarters on $100 bar bill, on a food bill.
Right.
So it's not something that people are really going to be impacted by.
And the bulk of it, that's a very good point, Joanna, the bulk of it would, even though, you know, I'm using Dario's as an example, just because it's a place where you might actually pay 100 bucks at a single sitting, um, the bulk of the actual collections, if the other cities and towns that we've looked at are any indication, would be from non-Fichburg residents. It would be from the businesses that service people coming off the highways, people, you know, just stopping in for something or other. Um, the bulk of it wouldn't even come from the city or from our small businesses. Uh, but, you know, it's, you know, on the table, exactly. And I, you may have noticed, I have a tendency to talk loudly and at length, is not my intention, if, if anyone ever feels, you know, either any of you here or anyone listening, if anyone ever feels like I'm, like, steamrolling you or whatever, or trying to browbeat you, I, I promise I'm not, just tell me to ghoul it. Uh, because it's not my intention to just drill this in until you agree with me, it's just, I have strong thoughts, that's all.
Thank you, thank you. Now, now, you said you had two messages, the first message was to vote, was...
Yeah, to vote. The, the second one was simply, my second purpose in being here is to brag about my clerk's office, because I think you got a, you got a glimpse tonight of just how much work goes into the elections alone. There's so many other pieces, other moving parts in that office that no one sees because they don't happen right there at the window. And I do see them, because like Joanna said, I come in once, once a week or once every other week to just catch up, make sure that everything's, that we're on the same page on everything and set the agenda for the next meeting and so on. Um, and it's been a real revelation for me, just how much they have to keep track of in any given day and how hard they work at it. I, I could not juggle all those things and still have a smile every time I come up to the window, instead of being like, yep, what do you want?
That's not enough.
But they manage that every single time. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I, I do, I pride myself, I've hired, you know, numerous people, when I came, there was no bilingual person on the first floor. For Pittsburgh, there was not a bilingual person on the first floor. We would have to go to the third floor or the second floor. I've hired two bilingual people. Um, the deficit of that is that they keep getting borrowed to go help the other team with the people's questions. But, you know, we, we have to adapt to our community and, and I, my team understands, I, I totally believe I'm here because you people, the residents come to my window. If you don't come and ask for these things, I don't need five people sitting there. I, I, so our job is to service them to the best of our ability, and every person that comes to our window, we have that philosophy. We are here because you're paying for us to service what your needs are.
And every, every year, the number of mandates from the state increases and from the federal government, and every year, somehow, they manage to do more with less. And so that's, that's honestly my second message.
That was your second message.
Is just, you know...
Thank you.
These, these people are rock stars.
Thank you, we try.
Yeah, and I'll second that, that's my message, because...
Thank you.
All, all the state and federal unfunded it.
Oh, yes.
That's the key word there.
Yeah, you look at, you look at that budget that we deal with every year, a large, large, large portion of it is things where someone above us has said, do this thing, and it's your job to figure out how to pay for it.
Right, they don't provide the funding.
So...
Well, you just do it and you don't get paid for it.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Because it's got to get done. And it's not, the people that it's impacting's fault, I'm not getting paid for. So I, I have to put that aside and do what needs to be done for the public.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, thank you all for attending the meeting tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, I had a great time.
We got a lot of information exchanged to, to the public. Uh, the next city council community meeting will take place on Monday, November 25th at 7:00 PM right here in the legislative building. Uh, Pittsburgh Housing Authority Executive Director Doug Bushman and Senior Land and Climate Associate Ryan Hendricks will make presentations and answer questions. I went to a very interesting meeting last week about nature-based solutions that are going to be happening, green infrastructure in Pittsburgh. So he had several proposals and he's going to come next month and talk about them. And, uh, so there's a, there's some federal money that's coming Fitchburg's way through the Nashua River Watershed Association, so very interesting. Okay, well, thank you and good night.
Thank you, it's nice meeting all of you.
Thank you.